I would like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. First order of business, pledge of allegiance, Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right. Item two. Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Seeing that we have just town or Board of Ed employees on the line, I don't think that's going to happen, so. Item three, approve the minutes, three dot one would be the November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, is there a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries in here.
Oh, abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining, that's right, one more thing. MJ coming down. Prior to that, prior to MJ. Something we need to add to the agenda, and that's a display on the Guilford Town Green. On behalf of the Guilford Chamber of Commerce. It's. The name of Herb Schwartz, so is there a motion to add that to the?
I'll move.
Second. Yeah, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Make sure. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jean, good morning.
Good morning. So I'm gonna start with revenues, we are at thirty-three percent through the year. Brought in just shy of fifty-five percent, just one percent lower than last year. Notice some of our friendly folks are golfing again, we're at sixty-five point two.
The weather's good in Fort Worth lately.
Yeah, so. And Fire has brought in over thirty-three percent revenue, almost thirty-five, and Youth and Family Services continues to generate a lot of revenue, a little bit less than last year, but we did up their budget as well, so take that into consideration. Otherwise, is there any other questions regarding revenue?
I have none.
Okay.
The decline is not a matter of tax collection or anything like that.
You mean tax collection itself?
No, I'm just trying to see why it went down. I mean, one percent doesn't sound like a lot until you look at what it actually means.
Yeah, I mean, it could mean we less delinquent taxes been paid for the first quarter, you know, there's a lot of items within that, it's not just our current taxes. Interest payments, you know, it makes up a lot, so, you know, a lot of different items there. No concern is, at this point, anything over fifty percent is what we're expecting to be at this point.
All right, now anything further on revenues? Hearing none, let's move on.
So on the expenditure side, we're at thirty-six point three percent spent, again, slightly less than last year. Discussed some of the budgets already that pay out early in the year, so I won't go into those again. I wanted to address a couple of them that seem high. No, even zoning Board of Appeals seems high, but if we take out their encumbrances, you know, they have a low number. The Fire Department, if you remove their encumbrances, are at thirty-three percent, exactly where they should be at this point in the year. Similar with Public Works, Youth and Family Services, and Park and Rec, they have high encumbrances, which is, makes their percent obligated right now higher, but you can see they are comparable to last year.
Fire Department is right online?
Right online, without, yeah, without their encumbrances, they'd be right online. And you can see they're slightly less than where they were last year, even with encumbrances.
Placement salaries are still tracking? Little, they're, placement's a little above the thirty-three percent, but at forty, forty-two.
A question about capital, but you might not be able to answer it.
Yeah.
On my mind, because we met last week, and several of the departments expressed a need for vehicles next year, which was interesting to me, because when we met last spring, those items were, didn't seem to be on anyone's radar, so that was. So, and now I see that in the capital budget for the current year, outside of police, there are, it looks like there are four vehicles that we approved, which haven't been purchased yet, I don't know if that's, if you have any offhand knowledge of that, or if that could be still about the delays in ordering, or?
I'm not specifically sure, but I, I don't want to say anything that isn't correct, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
And I know you mentioned that the vehicle, the study that you guys are putting together is coming along well.
Yes, yep.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Health benefits? What else do we have left, right?
So, what you'll notice, what you'll notice here is I've paid the first two months of expenditures for stop loss, if you remember, last month I reported that we need to catch up on paying two months in November, two months in October, I mean, in December, and we'll be back, you know, on track for the second half of the year, so that is starting to be shown. Still don't have reimbursements back from them yet, we are still working on that, but at the moment, it's only forty thousand dollars. So, I, you know, I'm not too worried, our consultant is working on getting a meeting together so that we can start getting reimbursements, now that we're making our payments, we're looking to get the money back as well. So, we are projecting a one point four million dollar surplus right now, but of course, we are behind in stop-loss payments. And claims, as you can see, are trending similarly to last year, again, this is the time where employees are using their deductibles, so our claims are normally lower, and they start to ramp up, you know, the second half of the year.
Projected surplus at this point, which is very early in the process, you know, there's two hundred thousand, two hundred forty thousand for stop-losses.
Yeah.
Still projected at one point two. The good news would be that holds up, and our place health is.
Right, but keep in mind, that's because our claims are lower the first part of the year, and we haven't paid the stop-loss, so there's a lot embedded into that number, it's really not a.
Hard to read that.
Yeah. We were this, we were at this place last year at this time, and we ended up with only a hundred thousand dollar surplus last year, so you know, it's, that, I really put little significance on that number at this point.
Financial?
I have one more.
You have one more, right? Possible action resolution to authorize supplemental appropriation. Ninety-four thousand dollars repatriates the heating ventilation air conditioning systems involved in the school, let's see what that.
Yeah, Cliff is on the line as well, although I did give you a copy of an email that explained to me, so I'll just say that, you know, the resolutions that we pass to authorize bond bond spending do give the selectmen and the Board of, the Board of Finance the autonomy to, to move that, that money around, it's, it's right in the resolutions, many times, so every time somebody wants to use money slightly off of what the specific use is for, I have a discussion with Bond Counsel. Many times, it's a simple yes or no from Bond Counsel. Sometimes, it's a yes, but, and this is our yes, but, so we're looking to move money, and if you can see from my little spreadsheet, you can tell this, this is just a snippet of the quarterly report, you know, that I send you guys. So we're looking to transfer some money from the Guilford Lakes HVAC upgrades into Baldwin Middle School HVAC upgrades for the reasons outlined in the email, and if you have any specific questions, I would have to direct you to Cliff. But, so this will require a passed resolution by this board and the Board of Finance this evening in order for Cliff to be able to use this money in this fashion.
What was the but from Bond Counsel? What?
But you need to fill out a resolution, this is the but.
Because we were complaining about changing?
No, because a lot of, oftentimes, Bond Counsel will just give me a yes, it does not have to come through this board. We do this, I won't say on a regular basis, but it happens two or three times throughout the year, this one, he asked to have a resolution passed by the.
So the quick summary is, there's no general funds here, there was not enough money in the Baldwin HVAC bonding, there's money left over at Lakes, they're gonna reallocate bonding from one school to another.
Correct, is that correct, Cliff, right, works for you?
Correct, yes.
Thanks, guys. And this was on the discharge side, it looks like, from your memo, not the, sort of the, the main project, which was to install, you know, a new HVAC and ductwork on the, on the use side essentially of the, the heat side.
Correct, so this goes past the original scope of the project, we originally thought we could use all the existing ductwork downstream of the HVAC unit to end up causing too many issues with the system, so we have to make these changes to make the system work efficiently, yep.
You need a motion for this?
Yes.
I'll move. So a second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Cliff, assuming all goes well this evening, I will let you know tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, Order of Education Director Cliff Gurnum, five dot one, removed from the table and take possible action to waive three proposal requirements contract with BL companies for design permitting implementation of Baldwin Pond revitalization project, Cliff, for yours.
Thank you, so what we're looking to do is similar to what we're presently working on over at Adams, which is to revitalize essentially the pond at Baldwin, which is just I'd say just west of the main parking lot, and that pond receives majority of the water runoff from the fields that are above that above the school, just west of the school there, along with the runoff from the road itself, so over the years, over time, a lot of sediment, sand, debris have accumulated in that pond, and it's basically filled in almost completely, so we're looking at getting that revitalized, digging it out, removing the sediment, and restoring it back to a true like pond storage area. So BL presently is working for us at Adams doing the project, getting it approved through the Inland Wetlands Commission or Committee, and we're looking to do the same thing here at Baldwin, is to have them help us with the design and the whole approval process with the Inland Wetlands Committee. If need be, depending on how much we have to remove from that pond, we may have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers, that will be determined be determined as this project gets fully developed, so they'd help us all the way through, straight through the project itself with construction management and closeout of the project, so this scope and the proposal have been reviewed by the Standing Building Committee, and they have recommended awarding the work to BL companies in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars using existing funds from a twenty-one, twenty-two bond for engineering, which has a balance of about two point one million in it.
Thanks, Cliff, quick question, BL Companies, are they on the shortlist, the on-call engineering list?
I don't think they are offhand, I'd have to go back and double check.
I feel like we have a lot of work with them. We do. Yeah, they want a lot of business from us.
Did they, did they bid on the Adams Creek project, or was, I don't remember the circumstances, was that also a case of waiting the bid requirement?
I believe we waived the bid requirement on that project as well.
So how's it in the best interest of the town of Guilford to waive the bid requirement, I guess that's what I don't understand, why wouldn't we go out to bid?
So, the reason I believe we waived the Adams was based upon the experience and background of BL having the most experience or substantial experience dealing with this type of work. So when we had looked at a couple of the other on-call firms, they did not have as much experience or expertise in this field, so that's how we ended up going with BL for Adams.
Has there been any consideration of adding BL Companies to our on-call list if we feel that they're that capable and that, that's strong?
I would definitely recommend that as we move forward, yes, especially if we have more projects of this nature coming down the pike, it would be in our best interest to add them, yes.
How would they get on that list, is that a Standing Building Committee?
We go out to, we go out to RFP for that, yeah.
Correct, yep. So normally RFP goes out every about three to four years, and we reevaluate and award the on-call services. It's just, this is an area that we haven't utilized much, so it hasn't really been on our radar to find somebody with this type of experience. A lot of the times, we're looking at the engineering department, the architectural, civil, that type of thing, but in this case, it's a scope that, or a trade that we hadn't looked at, because we hadn't used it in the past, at least on our side, I'm not sure if the town has. I believe the town may have used them for some of their work as well.
I don't recall us using them.
No.
Janice?
No, we also have access to the COG on-call list of engineering services, so that's where we've usually tapped for any specialty things outside of what our on-call list has. There's a number of engineers, various specialties that have, that are on that list.
Any chance BL's on the COG list?
I don't recall, I don't want to say yes or no without really.
Cliff, just talk a little bit about the Standing Building Committee's approval on it, there is, is it your recommendation to Standing Building Committee, or did you bring it to them, and it is their recommendation?
I brought to them, they reviewed the proposal, thought that proposal, based upon the amount of work and the scope, was a reasonable price for this type of work, and they made that recommendation.
All right, well, let's put it on the table, is there a motion to approve?
I do have another question about it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Like the motion.
One second. Let me try your minds on that.
Aye.
Oh, no, no, no.
Discussion, discussion. Other question?
That's it.
Okay, so about the funding, is this the same, so we're transferring out of the open appropriation that has funding left, is this the same one that we just talked about for the the project?
Right, we're not actually transferring funds, so each bond has certain amount of engineering fees incorporated into it for future and upcoming projects, so we can use those fees for design of projects such as this, so we don't have to transfer funds, it's already designated in the pot, in the bond for engineering work.
Thank you, all right, and that's just in general engineering work?
Correct.
Oh, okay, thank, got it, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, while we don't necessarily like to see bid waving, it's not unusual for us to do that in certain circumstances. So I guess this is a referendum whether or not we feel comfortable with that, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, staying?
Aye, in favor?
Aye.
In favor, I'm sorry, it's a little late, trying to decide.
All right, Cliff, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
You as well. All right, even though it doesn't look like he works for the Park and Recreation Department, no. Park and Rec, and it does say Fire Department, discuss to take possible action to use American Rescue Plan act funding for the replacement of AEDs and cabinets at seven parks and recreation facilities in town. Mike, as I think you probably were on the email chain, there was some desire by a certain engineer who works for the town of Guilford to have one of these put at the Town Hall South, because they are facility without it, obviously, and we're siding with their part, so Mike, with that?
Good morning, thank you, on behalf of Ellen and Rick, filling in for them, it's really their project, we're supportive of their project. As you know, we have one, currently one outside AED cabinet at Bitner, that was our first kind of model, we up in the area of the first speed, or disc, disc golf course and that area up there, so with that, the plan came to kind of move with some other parks in that area. So Ellen outlined, Ellen and Rick outlined in the email, they're looking to add some additional outdoor cabinets, Nut Plains Park, Long Hill Road Park, they're coordinating with the schools, so the high school, Chapin Island, Lake Quanapog, Adams, and Bitner, the reason I bring up Bitner twice is talk, is talk about putting one closer down to baseball, softball, soccer fields as well. So we reached out to our vendor for that, we did the last project with a local company, the Fibtech, they've been very supportive. They agreed to, they're actually gonna donate two units, so the total price award, we plan on purchase, our goal is to purchase five, and they're gonna donate two, so add an additional seven throughout town, the AEDs have a total cost of about five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars for all, all the AEDs, so.
That's great.
And then the cabinets, the outdoor cabinets, we're gonna stay with the same exact cabinets we purchased for the last ones, and for a total of seven, seven cabinets, about eight thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. We need a little bit of a host for the, so equipment to install the cabinets, about five hundred dollars, and then the last piece, we were working with IT and the Police Department, actually, just improving a little bit of security in terms of like, if in the event that somebody takes one, we have the ability to track it and get it back. So on the total project, I want to say the last piece I'm waiting for is the total price of the, the tags that go with the devices, but it's gonna be approximately sixteen thousand. Once we kind of get everything together, we have some initial quotes together, and then we're basically looking to fund that under ARPA for Park and Recreation.
Now we need to have one for Town Hall South.
Yep, and so.
Is that included in it?
So, yes, so we are, we're going to one of the ones that we're repurposing, so, so the beaches, both of the beaches have them during the summertime, Park and Rec, or I'm sorry, Park and Rec, Jacob's Beach and Lake Quanapog, but they're stored inside for the lifeguards, so they're not really public use AEDs. So at that point, moving with this project, we would have public access AED, and one of those ones that has attached to lifeguards is gonna get repurposed for Town Hall South, which will add another town building.
Well, we can talk about that, I think. Because I would anticipate we would want to do that most.
And if we, we can, and we can, whatever you recommend, we're, we're for, so, and the more buildings, especially like to Fibtech and their their models, the more public defibrillators out there and early access to defibrillation, and in public today, we probably have at least fifteen public access AEDs, so this would bring us up in the twenties, which is, again, for us in the Fire Department, when we know that a cardiac arrest has happened and somebody has put the defibrillator on somebody, their chance of survival goes up ten percent for every minute that goes by, so it's really important.
This is probably just a typo, but I, under, under the listing of Chapin Island Park, it says, location of this park to the fire department.
So, I think Ellen, in the email, she was looking for recommendations inside Chapin Island Park, where we would put one.
I see, leaving the location up to you.
Yeah, we're gonna look at what the best, you know, suitable location, and this is, a lot of it's preliminary, you know, we're gonna do some further site assessment of where the best place would be, where it's, you know, visible, available to the public, and covers the most area, especially in the recreation areas where someone can get to it very quickly.
Got it. So for a couple.
Sure.
The battery life on these is like four or five years?
About five years, yeah, and a couple things, they're pretty smart, they, they, they start to notify, they beep, and we also keep track, I said a lifecycle, we have a database that we keep track of every location, when the pads expire and when the batteries expire. It's not perfect, like sometimes a town hall, the one in the downstairs, sometimes we get a phone call and say, hey, your, your AED's beeping, or it's telling us stuff.
You guys would take care of that maintenance out of your budget?
Yep, so we, normally, we manage, say, service or if anybody in the community calls, if it's a, a public access AED that was donated to like, I'll give it pages or the marketplace, they, they cover, they pay for the cost of pads and stuff, but we will go out there and go through the AED with them and direct them to the Defibtech of what they need, if something, the battery goes bad or the pads need to be replaced.
And so you almost touched on, I mean, I know this, I know these things actually talk you through what you're supposed to do, how is somebody supposed to know that somebody's having a cardiac arrest as opposed to some other problem, like how do they know that this is what that indicated first aid for that person is at that time?
Good question, so part of, the first thing is early access to nine-one-one, so most people in the mobile phone world are dialing nine-one-one, and in, and in most of those cases, the dispatcher, they perform emergency medical dispatch, so they're on the phone as they have this, and say, hey, because that first link is notifying the fire EMS and getting that, us on the road, because some of the, some of the travel time from the station to these locations is, you know, five to seven to eight minutes. So during that time, the dispatcher's going through, and if somebody goes down, it may be for a lot of reasons, it's not just a, you know, a heart attack or cardiac arrest. But the dispatcher's normally that first vital link in walking them through, you know, the, what the course of action should be based on symptoms or whatever, but if somebody actually is trained in CPR and they know somebody goes completely unconscious, that's one of the first things they do is put those pads on somebody, and the defibrillator's smart enough to, it only recognizes certain types of rhythms, and those rhythms that are become shockable rhythms, or they could actually restart the heart, that's the vital piece to the AED.
So you could, the, the machine will know, that's fascinating, the machine will know
Yep.
if somebody's had a cardiac problem, as opposed to stroke or some other problem.
Correct.
Put the pads on, it'll walk you from there.
And it, from the time you pull it out, it's gonna say, open, open the pads, look at the left pad, it will walk you through, and there's pictures on each pad, the defibrillator actually walks you through step one, step two, and it is, it's really fascinating with, you know, watching how it works, and it's really simple to do.
There's repeating though, first step in any emergency.
Call nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one, thank you. Recently, I had the opportunity to go through training, Jim Concedine offered it, the Fire Department offered it, Jim Concedine did a terrific job, but it's really foolproof with the AED device, it even tells you to clear, everybody to clear away, it just walks you through step by step. So, a quick question, and again, I should know the answer to this, or should have asked somebody else the question. Do we have devices in every town building at this point? I'm thinking youth of, the social services.
Not Town Hall, Town Hall South, not yet.
Not yet.
I'm not sure a hundred percent of town buildings, but most town buildings, I, I don't, I don't want to give a definitive answer until I have the right answer. But if we have to look further out.
I would suggest, let's get an inventory and we'll add to the list, because I think protecting our employees is equally important to protecting the community, so. And I don't think there's any reason for someone in Youth and Family Services to have to run over here to get an AED
Right.
to go back to doing so, so.
Do you have any data on the usage of the existing ones?
So the exist, so we only have the one public, well, I say one, one public on the town side in the parks, but existing data, the we haven't used any yet, or they haven't been used yet, which is a good thing, public use AED, the Planet Fitness was our last cardiac arrest save, where they had a defibrillator there and used it within the last, I'd say, two years to three years, and that, it, that converted the person's heart and saved their life. So I'd say one that I know of within the last three years on a public use AED.
We, we've had some conversations in the past with Defibtech about their municipal model on getting them deployed to all the appropriate spots, but and again, I think Ben Reiner, who's on this call, might be able to help us with a friendly article reminding folks where they are, where they're gonna be, so when somebody goes down, they know, they may know that there's one nearby, we had discussed putting one over by the kiosk at the Park and Rec building, at the, at the time, was there a need for electricity at that, at that time? Because there seemed to be some kind of stumbling block to putting it there, and it may well have been the cabinets and the fact that they might go south.
Yep.
The units might go south, it was some concern, but the, the area that I think probably draws the most number of people at any given time is the Town Green.
Yep.
Now, you know, I don't know, we put one right in the green, in the middle of the green, I'm not sure, or maybe around the periphery, but is that something we should take a look at, you think, as from a public safety perspective?
Yeah, I mean, that's, the kiosk is a nice, it's central to a lot of things, and that traffic, the, the good thing about that public use twenty-four seven AED in the box outside is it's always available. Where, you know, the library, the town hall, many of the churches, pages, we're, we're very. Where, you know, the library, the town hall, on many of the churches, pages, we're, we're very saturated within the town green, but not twenty-four seven. Um, so.
Sunday, Sunday night concerts in the summertime.
Yep.
Somebody would have to run into town while we got one, right? The key, so. You know, I, I, I think about it, there's that transformer right by the, uh, the holiday tree, uh, so there's already something on the green. How obtrusive, uh, uh, is this?
Um, it's not, I, I'd be better off showing you pictures of the one that exists up at Bitner already. Um, and I know there's some different models, it's getting more and more traction as time goes on, um, and ways to make it look, you know, you know, not just like a metal box, uh. But yeah, it is, but it does need to, you know, it is for people, it does want to catch attention in terms of emergency nine one one or defibrillator available, so.
Okay, and you notice the, uh, the memo points out, these, it's not just a metal box, it's weatherproof. It's gonna preserve this thing presumably with some information.
And that was one of the big pieces too, originally with the Bitner Park project, is finding the right box, the right manufacturer, that's gonna fit the needs to make sure it's, it's, it's so far, um, so, so good, so.
And you said that it has the tracking device in case somebody decides to take it. Is it as a, uh, you know how catalytic converters are being sold, is this a highly, um, stealable item, or is it something that people are looking to steal or?
We haven't seen any, any, any of the ones, any of the ones that are in public right now, we haven't seen an issue, an issue with, but, I mean, they are a thousand dollars, so the value is high enough where we should, you know, um, be paying, it's not a fire extinguisher, it's not so, somebody took the fire extinguisher off the wall, but.
Aren't they all interconnected or something? I mean, they, you said they send signals. Steal one, you couldn't really use it anyway, I guess the company wouldn't know what was going on.
Yeah, we're, we're, and I don't know how they tie back to the company or any of that electronically. I just know that, um, some of these are in remote locations, so they're not attached to wifi, they're, you know, they're out in the middle of the field and they're not connected to a system. So we're really trying to look at a, of the, a good way or best practice to, uh, be able, in the event that somebody takes one, and hopefully they don't, I mean.
So it's not, it's not a high risk.
Right, but you, you mentioned earlier, you've got to put RFID tags on them.
Yeah, we're looking to have in the event that something's.
So more vandalism thing, I would think, than anything.
Exactly. That's right. Well, you know, and, and, and if Ben does an article, maybe the fact that the, uh, RFID tags are gonna be on them, which might dissuade somebody from taking them, because we'll be able to find out where they are, so. Any further questions or comments? Um, is there a motion to approve, uh, moving forward with the purchase of the, uh, devices and storage containers, uh, storage units? Uh, with the possibility of adding more to, uh, the, 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 the total number based on a survey of town buildings? Uh, and potentially adding the green in, uh, from ARPA funds. We're not, we're not, it's not gonna be a definitive number today, but just approve the use of, based on the identif- the final identified need.
I like the motion, yes.
Second.
Second.
Well, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, like, thank you.
Thank you.
As always, well done.
Thanks.
Next up, by the way. Town engineer, Janus Plaziac, um, eight dot one, discuss to take possible actions to award bid number one, dash twenty-three, twenty-four, reconstruction of Nut Plains Road. Hooray, we're finally.
Yeah, um, so we, we, we put, put it out to bid late, mid September, we got bids back, you know, we were, you, you got the bid summary. Um, and we were, when you add in contingencies and incidentals, we were about a million dollars short. Um, it's a lots of funded project, hundred percent state bond funding, so we had to go back to the state to see if they can come up with, at cog and the state come up with the extra funds, which they did. I attached the letter, um, authorizing the additional funds, uh, from the state. And, uh, just went through, um, approval through CHRO to make sure that we could award the, the bid and got that late last week, so. Um, here before you, I do want to point out, the Rita and Sons was a low bidder, as you can see from the bid. They, when going through and analyzing the bids, they had a, a transposition problem, so their, their actual bid is two million five hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars, they had transposed the last five and six, so we found that ninety dollar error, uh, in analyzing the bids.
That's a roll.
So, um, and, and that's reflected in the letter from the state that it's, you know, the correct number, so.
Have we worked with this contractor before?
Uh, no, I have not, but I did do, uh, outreach, uh, as part of my bid analysis, uh, to references, and I've only heard good things. Yeah, I heard great things, actually. Middletown. Yep, I heard great things from, um, North Haven and, uh, Cheshire as well, has a project with them, uh, so.
Yeah, I mean, by no means should that be a reason not to do somebody, but it's good that you did some due diligence.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But not, not surprisingly.
Yep.
Can you just give me a quick recap, what, from where to where, getting, taken care of?
So this will be at the intersection of Goose Lane and Nut Plains, which is the weird yields intersection.
Yeah.
Uh, right by the cemetery, we'll be teeing off that intersection to make it make sense and be safer. And then from there to the north, all the way to the North Madison Road, we're rebuilding the road. Um, and it will include extensive amount of drainage being added, um, because there really isn't any drainage on the road. There's, uh, a few cross culverts and ditches, but not enough, the road is very flat. Um, so we're adding about forty catch basins to the road, um, thousands of feet of pipe, and, uh, also then rebuilding the pavement structure.
That sounds like a lot for three million dollars.
It is, it is a big project.
And that intersection, that crazy intersection, you, you say, it's just, it's off, not only is it odd angles. It's the height changes as you go up Nut Plains instead of Goose Lane, I mean, how the heck are they selling that?
So it's still gonna be a pretty steep decline from, uh, Nut Plains to Goose Lane slash Nut Plains. It's also weird, cause it's Nut Plains and Nut Plains. Uh, but, um, cause we can't really, you know, we flattened it as much, much as we can, but to make up the difference, we would end up, cause it continues to drop off, we, you know, bury the house, with down gradients and, and all the rest, so. Uh, we're, we're doing the best we can to balance that out and make it as safe as possible. It's still gonna be a pretty steep incline coming down of that stuff.
Improvement, and you say a T intersection, how, how are you teeing that off, what's, how's that working?
Um, so instead of when you come down Nut Plains, you kind of swoop to the left, you're gonna come down Nut Plains straight and stop at a stop sign.
Hope your brakes hold. Are you paying it?
We, we have, we have steeper grades in town, I happen to live in one of those neighborhoods.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a tricky intersection, this is great to hear.
Yeah, yeah, so we're excited to get that one done, and then we're, we're under design still and have to apply for funding to do the rest of Goose Lane to the south. So it'll be a nice corridor.
Is any of this including any sidewalk?
No, no, as you recall, there was the proposal for the Nut Plains pathway years ago, uh, prior to me being here, that got shot down significantly by the community at the time, those funds were reallocated basically to what became the Route seventy-seven sidewalks. Um, and so, uh, working with Safe, Safe Streets Task Force, um, was already, uh, come together when we had started design of this project and ran this by them, as well as public outreach to the community. Um, we're not including any path, what path or sidewalk, but we are, um, addressing it with a twenty-six foot wide roadway that'll have two eleven foot lanes and two two foot shoulders. So it's not dedicated safe space, but it's a little better than what's out there now.
And the striping will include any bike paths or anything like that?
No, but you will have the white lines.
The white line space.
Yeah, a little bit of a shoulder.
An eleven foot road, eleven foot lane is a little narrower?
Yes, typically you have a twelve foot lane, uh, we're trying to go down as narrow as we can, working with the fire department and, and public works. Uh, we've kind of settled on eleven feet as being a comfortable position.
Despite the fact that it's just a push for ten.
Yeah, there's a push for ten, but.
Safe streets wants it narrower, it slows people down, right?
Yeah, it's just that ten is a little narrow, um, and I, I, I worried that there's a false sense of security to those using the shoulder when you're forcing the driver to try and maneuver a very narrow lane, and particularly when you get into trucks, this is a collector road, when you get into trucks or fire trucks or landscaping vehicles, anybody that has the wide, um, rear, you know, the side mirrors, um, you could end up flipping and things like that, so we're, we're just trying to strike a balance, so right now we have decreased to eleven foot lanes. Uh, we recently restripped Stepstone Hill, I don't know if you noticed, um, two eleven foot lanes, uh, working with Safe Streets Task Force to give that a try there and create the white line shoulder area for giving some space to non-vehicles.
Non-motorized vehicles?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
So is it safe to say we've adopted an eleven foot standard for most of our roads?
Yeah, I think we feel comfortable going to eleven foot lanes.
I, I was referring to Janus's, uh, Safe Streets is looking at, uh, possibly opportunities to go to ten in certain areas, uh, owing to the fact that there's some, some data out there, some studies that suggest, uh, a decrease in, uh, in accidents and fatalities, mostly fatalities on using ten foot lanes, but.
I'm sure we have ten foot lanes on some of our roads. Not by choice, just by the fact that.
They're already there.
Very narrow.
So, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, this is only to the fact of the small world, or the fact that I've lived in the state my entire life, but when I saw the work, the, the, the Rita and Sons, turns out that the founder of that company was my pop Warner football coach. Well, it's just too small, these were, these were his sons that now run the business. All right, uh, yeah, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion though.
Second.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
So, spring?
Yeah, well, depending on the winter, we might be able to get an early start on group drainage, but likely spring start date.
Well, I think the, the residents will want that place.
Yeah.
Decrease in flooding happens every year.
Yeah, it'll be difficult before it gets better, but.
Okay, item nine, Arctic Human Resources, Mitch Goldblatt. Good morning, Mitch.
Morning.
So we're here to consider to act on plan amendments to the town police, uh, schools, uh, and, and school plan plans to account for the twenty twenty-three cost of living adjustments.
Right, yeah, this is just a, uh, follow-up, uh, based on your actions, uh, several months ago to award, uh, cost of living adjustments to, uh, all of our pensioners, it requires a, an amendment to each of the plans. Uh, amendment has been drafted by Milliman, it's reviewed by Chris Hotson, and it has been recommended to you by the pension committee. So it just needs your action, this just codifies what you've already done, uh, puts it into the plans, uh, for perpetuity. And, uh, requires your vote, hopefully today too, and then after you vote, uh, I think Matt has the actual documents, need all five of your signatures.
And this is, this is the one-time adjustment?
Yes.
Because of what we did already this year.
Correct, and if you do something in the future, we would have to do this again, which this was done, uh, you know, it's been a while since the cost of living adjustment was, was approved by the board. Uh, this was done previously, uh, you know, each time, i- i- it, it amends the plan each time.
What did you say in perpetuity a minute ago?
Well, just that the, the, I'm sorry, the fact that we're doing it.
Doing it just leaves, it leaves, now leaves it as part of the plan, sorry, I may have missed something.
It's not a one-time bonus, it's a one-time adjustment, two point eight percent to everybody's pension.
Right, and it, and it.
If we were to do it again, we'd have to go through this process.
Correct, correct.
So what's in perpetuity?
Just of the, the, the plan.
The two point eight percent.
The, 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 the plan itself, it just.
The fact that we did this, this time.
Yeah.
Coming forward, everyone will have this new rate, two point eight percent on top of what they got, but it's not gonna happen here.
Red flag would fly, I didn't mean it that way.
Okay, um, any further comments or questions?
We're gonna vote on all three, do one.
Yeah, is there a motion to do all three?
It's like, vote that way.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, will you try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, yeah, that's much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I intend to consider and take possible action to set a public hearing date, uh, December eighteen, twenty twenty-three, to consider an ordinance amendment to extend the temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments in town at Guilford. Um, we, uh, myself, Pete, uh, our new town planner, who is completely underwater right now, because there's only an enforcement officer, uh, left and, uh, there's a medical situation with another staff member, um, has not been able to pay any attention to this since she came in in September, um, so, but we did meet, and we also met with Chuck Andrews with us, uh, to talk about how best to do this. Uh, originally, I think, uh, my settlement was, uh, the whole thing would be outlined in ordinance, uh, in turn, including uh, us, uh, determining the number of units, uh, number of, of, of available establishments, uh, all the way down to saying it's in the commercial zone, it couldn't be here, it couldn't be there. The recommendation that involved from our most recent meeting last week was sort of twofold, for sure. Uh, us doing a moratorium on allowing and, uh, some very minor restrictions of the number. Uh, and the fact that, uh, it can't be in a residential area, uh, they also are suggesting that we add, uh, marijuana can't be, uh, utilized in, in a public place. Similar to what we do with, uh, alcohol and smoking. But then, uh, introduce at the same time, a text amendment for the zoning code. So that is spelled out, so it is, e- even though the ordinance won't have all of the parameters that we're, we've been talking about, it will be a companion document to the, to the, to the text amendment, which would be an application by the Board of Selectment to planning and zoning to implement, uh, any guidelines, okay? And again, we haven't got to.
That's where the mileage thing might come in.
Yeah, where the mileage, the proximity of the schools, all of that kind of stuff, so. Uh, so that way, when we finally come up with a document, we'll be able to present it to the community and say, this is the way we're gonna allow it to happen. Originally, I, I, we thought, I thought, yeah, that's why I only play a lawyer on TV, and Pete always reminds me not to do that. Uh, and Chuck Andrews was actually the one that suggested we do it this, in this fashion, so, uh, we should, Chuck, uh, Chuck and Pete will be crafting both of those, uh, with some of the, the talking points that, uh, we've, we've talked about for a while relative to the, the parameters. So we are hoping to have a working document for us, uh, before, uh, the end of the year. Uh, so we can start to, you know, socialize it and get it out into the community and get some feedback. So I think that's where we were last time, was they don't have an idea of exactly what we, what we're proposing, so this will be very specific.
Sounds, it sounds like we're, we're down the path of allowing it.
If we do it, yeah, that's if we do, okay, then we still have, we still have a right to that decision.
Okay, well, that was the point, Megan, it sounds like we're going down the path of allowing it, but regulating it to our.
And I, and I, I think that was, it's consistent with some of the conversations we've had before, uh, you know, if it's an eventuality, okay, let's make it the way we want it, as opposed to, uh.
Right, in your conversation, it sounded to me like that jump had been made.
No, 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 no.
And I, I don't really have a problem with it, because I think that's a general consensus, yeah, we're talking.
Now, this was, this is really just the homework, to get it together, get something together that people can evaluate, uh, we can get feedback on it, so we can inform our own decisions with the, the feedback. Does that make sense?
Well, not only that, but we put something out to the public, our feedback. I mean, we've been talking about it in generalities, but no document, this will make a, create a document that we can pick apart.
The last time we extended this, uh, since then, we lost our town planner, uh, and, uh, they, you know, replaced him for a couple of months.
Is there any, uh, is there any time limit in how many times we can do this?
Uh, no, we can continue doing the moratorium, uh, so, uh, I think the resolution will say to, to try to give ourselves a tighter window to the end of, uh.
Yeah, I think it was a, a constraint that we put on ourselves, simply to go through one and move it along.
I would be particularly interested when we get back together to discussing the matter substantively, getting past the moratoriums and, and, and you know, debating how and whether we're gonna move forward. To sort of see it in two separate silos, the retail space and sort of wholesale, wholesale space, I, I keep seeing those kind of getting muddied up a little bit, and I, I feel kind of.
And the production distribution space.
I'm throwing, I'm throwing that on the wholesale, do you think that's a third category, it'd be, uh, not, not reverse that, but I really see a big difference between those two categories, at least this point.
Um, let me send back to you guys, or redistribute the document that Shipping and Goodman provided to us when we brought them in to talk. There are eleven categories that are regulated in terms of business activities.
I remember that, there was the whole transportation thing.
Yeah, right, so.
That's very, yeah, to, to lose point when we get back up to speed on it, having. That's right, yeah, to, to lose point when we get back up to speed on it, having her presenting him. She was very good.
She was good.
And, and I sort of, I feel like most of the objection has been to the retail side for the most part.
A lot of people didn't realize some of the other things.
Right, so it's important to get that out, yeah.
That's right, yeah, I mean, she brought up a couple of things that, uh, I was not familiar with.
Yeah, you know, from, I think this is a terrible line to use, but you can't be a little bit pregnant. If you're okaying one, why aren't you okaying the others? What's, uh, what, what is, what is, if, if the idea is, if the objection is on that it is dangerous. Or, you know, whatever your objection is, why is cultivation, uh, any less significant or more significant than retail sales?
I just always think customer or, or human contact is, is a bigger concern for folks. I, I, I see a distinction.
That's the marketing side for me, I mean, you get into the retail and they start signing up.
Well, see, see, we can default to the state statute, you know, if you remember, there are definitive, in the state statute. There are definitive sign guidelines, which we can revisit with the, you know, with, with this presentation from.
Yeah, great.
So I'll send, we'll send that back up.
Yeah.
Great, all right, all right, so.
I do think, I do think it's possible to come to a different conclusion.
Yeah.
You know, we, we had one person come and speak about how his, I think he was a Guilford resident and he was at an administrative business that he wanted to conduct from his home in Guilford.
Right.
So I would, it's, it's my, same way of a legal business, uh, you know, it's, um, I think.
Well, I just, I just have a, a problem. If we say it's okay to sell marijuana, why is it not okay for somebody to distribute it or cultivate it? It just seems inconsistent, you know?
Well, I see the possibility the other way, let more restriction on the retail side, more, more accessible for.
Well, that's.
Back office work and, or, you know, some warehouse in the industrial park that needs to, you know, if they're assuming all the other infrastructures in place to grow, water and whatever else. That it can work, yeah, I don't know. I'll be interested to continue the debate, that's my only point.
It can progress.
Yeah, that's right, all right, so is our motion to set the, uh, uh, public hearing date to, uh, consider, uh, the ordinance, extending the ordinance. Uh, on a temporary moratorium, uh, for December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make it, I have a question when we get to the.
Certainly.
Second.
Second.
So don't we usually, maybe it, it, it will be and it just isn't here right now, don't we usually put a date like to April or something? Don't we say it somewhere how long we're extending it to?
That will be in the, uh, resolutions, in the resolution, so.
Do you think it'd be better just to extend it to June, just, because it always seems, and I'm not, this is not in it by any way.
We can always shorten it, right, we can always end the moratorium.
Yeah, yes.
June thirtieth?
Yeah.
All right.
Because, um.
Is that, is that a motion to approve?
That's, no, that, uh.
The, the, the date's not in there, it's just a discussion, but I just think whatever date could be longer than April, I guess, that's what I'm saying.
I'll check, I'll check with Pete just to make sure that they're, you know.
Makes sense.
All right, we got a motion in a second, is, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Um, item eleven, consider and take possible action on twenty-twenty-four meeting schedule. Pretty standard, the exception of, of the Tuesdays, right? All right, is there, is there a motion to approve?
Justin, I don't have a bank account, there's any for us. Some.
Some votes, is there a second?
Second.
Well, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item twelve, uh, appointments and resignations, act on the reappointment of Clint Weston Murphy to the pension committee, for a term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, is there a motion?
I'd love to make that motion.
I'd like the second.
Second, uh, let me try you.
I need one, Charlie wants the third.
Hey, we mentioned it, sorry.
Multiple seconds, there are multiple seconds, let the record reflect. All right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, twelve dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint, uh, Kenneth Chirdello as an alternate to the harbor management commission for, to fill a vacancy for a term to expire. July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six, is there a motion?
Yes.
In a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? If you don't, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, item three, act on the appointment of Adam Cole, Cole into the standing fields committee, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, but I have a question.
Okay, in a second.
Oh, second.
In a question.
Um, he lists his affiliation as, um, independent. Now, sometimes people say independent when they really mean unaffiliated, because I didn't, don't, wouldn't be independent party have a, um, thing, you know, like the way the D's and the R's say.
Not necessarily, they can come directly to us.
I thought, oh, okay, I thought you only did that if you were unaffiliated, but you can, you don't have to go through your parties.
No.
Okay, my question is answered.
I don't have any other information on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Tracy, do you know, how, how did he get, how did this candidate get to us, was it from the independent party?
No, he applied directly.
Directly, okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's, that's great.
Excellent, all right, um, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Um, item thirteen, request for the use of town property, uh, thirteen dot one, uh, act on a request for the Shabat of the shorelines, place it on a, on a, on the green from December fourth. To the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, with a public lighting on December tenth, twenty-twenty-three, is there a motion?
Some votes, second.
In a second, uh, any comments or questions? Let me try your mind, well, other than the fact that the onyx early this year, huh?
Hmm.
Um, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Um, thirteen dot two, act on a request of Shabat of the shoreline to use green on, uh, and to place a sign on the green for his Jewish festival taking place. July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, sign placement six-thirty, seven fourteen, but he's in early this year.
He's in.
Um, is there a motion?
Some votes.
In a second?
Second.
Yeah, yeah, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. The item we have, the agenda would be, uh, thirteen dot three, and that is, um, the applicant, Herb Schwartz, I mean, uh, with, uh, behalf of the organization, which is Chamber of Commerce. For a display on the green, uh, the display, uh, will likely be there December first through, uh, December, uh, tenth, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And is there a second?
I'll say it.
All right, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Is there, does that make sense with the one that we just approved? Are they over kind of overlapping dates?
I think they're in different locations.
Different locations.
Oh, are they?
No, you know, the, the menorah is not beyond the, we'll make sure, we'll make sure they get coordinated.
I think the menorah should come into town is usually on the right-hand lower part of the green, like most of.
I thought it was close, I thought it was closer across from, uh, uh.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the west side, fluttery.
I mean, at least, they're usually, they're usually north of it.
That's, not, I mean, nine A, just the other application, it's not.
Menorah is typically close to the road.
Yeah.
Right, the Caribou herd is gonna be inland a little bit, oh, it says it right there.
I think he's curious though.
That's what I just said.
There was the element of surprise.
You sort of mumbled.
Don't worry about it, all right, we will, we will make sure we coordinate it to organizations for appropriate distance from, from San.
All right.
Uh, well, this is rife with all kinds of jokes, but, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Um, anything under, uh, committee reports?
No.
Correspondence, uh, I have one document that I received, uh, uh, Friday, Friday afternoon, which I apologize for not getting it aboard back. Uh, well, largely because I don't know how to do that, but, um, the, uh, the letter is in front of us and it is from, uh, John Kennedy, the chairman of the Fields Committee. Uh, and he is reacting to, uh, some, uh, conversations or, uh, concerns issued relative to the use of pesticides and herbicides on, uh, our fields by the, uh, Park and Recreation, uh, uh, Commission. Uh, and its, uh, crews, so, uh, a couple of points I wanted to make sure that, that he, he got across were. The board itself has come to the conclusion that the procedures of the federal and state offices were being followed correctly by the Park and Recreation certified employees, of which only two can do this work. That all safe and precautionary guidelines are being followed and that there is no adverse effect to the, uh, publicly used fields. Another note of, uh, should be known is just because there is a pesticide, herbicide on the field, it does not mean the whole area is treated. They spot treat to lessen the uses of, of spraying. Um, and then, uh, finally mentions without the control of weeds and insects, et cetera, our fields, uh, would turn to a harder playing surface for play. It could cause more, uh, more injuries to our athletes. The fields are safe and playable because of the outstanding knowledge and concern that our Park and Recreation crews and the department's director, so I just want.
It's a nice letter.
Yeah, I, I think the committee, the Fields Committee, which is, uh, one of the longer-standing, uh, committees in terms of membership, um. Where I think that they're on for life, but, uh, John might attempt being one of those, so, anyway, just, uh, any comments or questions?
No, I'm really glad to have this information, I wish there was a way to get it out there.
Organic fertilization stuff.
I remember that coming from.
I know in the green, there, people were complaining about the odor.
Right.
I, I, I think Rick and the crew were a top.
Well, if they're following state federal guidelines on the application of pesticides and use of saying, uh, they're, they're, they're in compliance.
Right, yeah, exactly, no, I agree with you, and I was, I was, I'm thinking that, given the amount of use that these fields get, it's, it keeps everything in great shape. And, and I'm, I know, they're, everything, and they're very attentive to the safety issues, I agree. I mean, and good for John for bringing it back to everybody's attention.
Peter, anything else?
That's it.
Do you have any update on the Quanapaw Roadhouse issue?
Uh, nothing, other than we're still trying to work with those three, uh, organizations to identify some funding to potentially move the, uh, uh, to, to move the.
Necessary quantity of structure.
Structure south, um, and Janice is still working with the state to see if there is any way to reconfigure the intersection with Department of Transportation to preserve.
But you mean moving it south, you, you mean remaining on the property?
Remaining on the property, yeah.
And then what? I mean.
Well, that's, that's why the, uh, historical, we have asked the historical folks to come up with some kind of plan for maintenance of it. This is not, we're not gonna use it for town storage or anything like that, so.
There's no real parking there, I mean, it's not gonna be a museum, is it?
It's a memorial.
I'll try not.
It's a memorial, yeah, there was some talk about possibly turning it into, you know, a, a museum of some type, but then you'd need power, staffing. Somebody had to open a closet.
That was not the intent when we purchased it.
No, no.
Saying.
I just keep getting struck by the fact that this, that this was, you know, eighteen twenty-three, the neighborhood, we got together, found some logs, they would have rolled that thing south, south, that's right. It'd be over, somebody would be farming.
Well, interestingly enough, and, and I'm not sure I shared this with you, but I did receive correspondence, uh, from several of the North Guilford, uh, folks, I think it was actually, uh, it was a petition.
Petition, we, we saw that, we saw that.
I think Buster Scranton was the, uh, the organizer of that, that effort, so.
There were quite a few names.
Yeah, there were.
And, and some, some of them were, there were, a lot of them were North Guilford people, but they were people from all over who agreed that it was time for that. Just gonna make another point. As we start, we said all along that we were very willing to put some kind of a recognition.
Issue to black.
Or something about, um, the ownership and all that.
I wanted to give, I wanted to give those organizations the opportunity to fund, grant funding, to, to accommodate something, uh, to, to preserve or to, uh, honor that. That building, or the original building, and I've been on the inside of that. It's ugly. It is. It's an order's nightmare, yeah, it was, it was absolutely, so.
And the piece that they actually think have some significance, very small.
It's small, that's a, a, a twenty by thirty, uh, original.
Trying to a little bit of that schoolhouse just north of the outlets in Killingworth.
Yeah.
In, in the triangle of the road, just a school out.
Exactly.
Yeah, it could be something. But again, somebody's gotta maintain the painting, keep the roof up, another grass island shock and shit.
Oh, yeah, how's that going?
It's going well, um, I think, I think there were a couple of articles recently, um, we are able to under, um, the deep, a deep general permit. For, uh, str- for certain, uh, dilapidated structures, we don't need a permit to move it. But we do, uh, we are going through the NDBB database to determine that what we're moving into doesn't upset a rare, uh, or endangered species. Uh, but we think we can move it back, uh, the plan is to move it back ninety feet, um, and.
Has anybody studied that that is the best course of action versus, uh, bringing that channel back to. Some historical path?
Uh, we've had some conversations, uh, the, um, that, that, that channel hasn't been dredged in five years. The, the dredging didn't go all the way down, just came into, uh, the, the, the federal channel into where we go for, uh, the, the Marina Basin itself. Uh, the shifting, uh, ties and sand are just completely changing the mouth of that, um.
I remember when they dredged it and they parked the tug there over the winter, and that's what started the changing of that direction. That's why I'm, I'm questioning whether moving it is, is the only path forward. I know it's been too many years now that the channel has redirected itself.
Right.
But, you know, with that other channel getting cut into.
Without, without putting barriers out there? Literally barriers, could, uh, we'll get, we're not gonna be able to stop that erosion, and the change of that thing, but in fifty years from now. Uh, several of those houses out on the end of Circle Beach Road are not gonna be accessible. And it's.
It's a sandbar.
It's, it's, it's shifting sand, it is a sandbar, so, but, uh, Janice and, uh, I've had those conversations, in order, in order to preserve it where it is today, you would literally have to build a sea, uh, seawall barrier along that. That's what happened, that's not, so.
And that's not an option.
But it could be an option, but that would be one awfully expensive option.
And assuming, assuming the various agencies sign off.
Right, now, now you're talking, now, now you're talking about DEP, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, uh, all kinds of folks on that. There is, there are some discussions right now going on about doing something similar to that over on the West River. Because we've lost so much shoreline along that area to preserve, uh, to, to create the, uh, barrier reef or whatever it is, uh. And there were some save the sound funds that are currently, uh, in play for designing of that, that, that kind of.
Okay, I've only been in town fifty years and I, it's remarkable and shocking what's happened to that across from Jeff mentioned.
I know.
The creek used to be, you know, several yards up the river and now it's dumps into.
So, so, it does. Okay, all right, quick.
Yeah.
Do you think, any, uh?
What am I gonna do with all this extra?
Come on, work it, man.
Sure.
Public forum? Hearing that, I'll let it take the motion to adjourn.
That's all, okay.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How's your reconstruction project going?